Good evening. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Got a full house tonight. Glad to see everybody. At this time, normally I would call on Commissioner Connect to invite someone to offer the invocation and lead the pledge. Can I put -- Mark, may I put you on the spot? Do you mind? Okay. If you would offer the invocation for us and lead us in the pledge. Our Chair of the School Board, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's pray together. Our dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this night and for the beautiful people who are in this building wanting to move our county forward, our city forward. We thank you, Lord, for all of our deliberations tonight. We just pray, Lord, that you just guide the decision-makers and every one of us that will be guided by your Spirit, that will act like your children, and that will work together for the glory of God and for the improvement of our community. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Say it. Happy Holidays to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, if there are any additional items to add to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add under new business, item I, spring thaw, fine forgiveness program for the Lee County Library.
Okay. All right. Any other additional items? Okay. One thing I would like to request of the Board is also under new business, we had item D, the consideration of a resolution in support of House Bill 551. Commissioner Dodson had brought that before us. He is not able to attend tonight, so I was just asking approval to table that until the next meeting when he can be here. So, all those in favor of the amended agenda, tabling item D and adding spring thaw, which I guess can actually become H? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Approval of consent agenda?
Madam Chair, my question that we approve tonight, subject.
Okay. Any discussion or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move into public comments. And just reminding everybody, when I call you up, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, and if you'll limit your comments to three minutes, and our county attorney will be keeping time, and so just kind of be listening out for her to let you know that time's up. So, our first speaker is D.E. Canning. Hi. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm proud to be here and glad to be able to exercise my rights as a citizen of the United States. My name is Dick Canning. I'm a legal taxpaying citizen of the United States in Lee County, have been for 34 years. My topic this morning, this evening is money and expenditures. Bear with me. An entrance sign at Enterprise Park for $350,000. A to-be-built speculation building in said park for $350,000 was rent payments of $19,000 a month. A school to be made on a privately-owned former school for a budget of $25 million, which was exceeded by every bidder. A roundabout to be built to accommodate traffic at the new school, $350,000. The building and associated property to be associated, to be purchased, for $2,200,000. A tax incentive gift of $346,000 of tax income for a potential project. The building to be made in the school may or may not have hidden costs, exhumation, due to unknown structural and building code compliance upgrades, and also the potential for hazardous material disposition. That's a cost figure that's a big variable. Is the existing cleared property ignored as a school building for sight for nostalgia? To me, a lower, not a higher, mill rate will serve as longer enticing more than a higher one, even though we continue to give over tax-reduced incentives to which benefit no taxpayers. Former President Harry Truman once said, "The buck stops here to curtail excessive spending." And esteemed former Henns Senator Everett Dergensen stated, "A million dollars here and a million dollars there assumes adds up to real money regarding spending." I beg this council to heed these words in practice. It is time to give the property-owning taxpayers a break rather than continue to spend without what appears to be any regard. Our mill rate is too high, especially based in comparison to surrounding counties. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Canning. Thank you. I'll take you, Walma.
I'm Jim Walmac. I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road here in Sanford, North Carolina. I have several thoughts about what's on the agenda tonight. Let me just start by briefly saying that I disagree with the proposal to take on new debt that some other organization wasn't able to pay off, specifically the Brick Capital CDC. I think it's inappropriate for us to make that a part of the package deal for a new elementary school. I'm not sure what kind of dealings were done behind the scenes, but I think that ought to be, see the light of day, and there ought to be more transparency with what that package deal looks like. You know, I just remind everyone that the county is already closing in on $100 million worth of debt, which is unprecedented for this county, this small county, and this population's not growing. So, that means we're going to bear a bigger burden. That's nearly $2,000 for every man, woman, and child in this county. You know, I thought this federal government was out of control on debt, and it looks like we are. This is after, as a sitting commissioner, we reduced debt by 20% in the four years I was sitting in those chairs. And I'm ashamed to say that we're going to be now almost double what it was when I left this county commission. We can't afford a $28 million elementary school. You can make us afford one, but we can't really afford it. And that's the 28 million that we know about now. That's before we even get into this. You can build two elementary schools for the price of what you're going to spend on this one. And you already have two elementary schools in your known long-term needs. You've got one now and one later. You could solve both of those problems with the same price by not going on this facility. Now, any real estate developer will tell you that it's unwise, at best, to develop a piece of property where you know you're going to have problems with crime unless you've solved the crime problem. Now, we've got a great sheriff. We've probably got one of the best sheriffs in the state of North Carolina, if not the best. And I think everybody's happy with the sheriff, and he's going to do his job. He's going to stand up, and he's going to do, he's going to continue to fight the mission, to secure the mission, no matter what we tell him he has to do. But at what cost? How much money are you willing to spend over the next 25 or 30 years to secure that facility? You know, I've seen, I've seen other people propose to have to put concertina wire and armed, AR-15 armed guards walking up and down the hallways to keep from happening what happened 35 years ago, when that young girl was brutally raped on that same building right behind there. I'm just saying, you don't need to take on that risk. You can avoid that risk by going to where it was originally planned to go, out on the Jonesboro campus. But spending 25 or 30 or who knows how much money, millions of dollars now, and then how much countless millions more in the future to secure that facility, how, at what, you know, what do you gain by that? I just don't understand. It doesn't make any sense. Now, I just wondered, a couple of quick questions that I want to just pose for the public. One, why hasn't the school system, before they came back to you, why hasn't the school system done a site survey analysis? There was no such analysis proposed or presented to the public. Why hasn't, why haven't we polled parents? And thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I just think that we got a lot more questions to be answered. Thank you.
Mr. Frank Del Palazzo?
Frank Del Palazzo, 425 Rolling Hill Road here in Sanford. My comments are very simple and straightforward. We have to stop spending money or spending like, like the proverbial drunken sailors. This Wicker School program is, at best, a boondoggle. I can't help but restate a couple of things that Mr. Walmac stated. Quite simply, we've got $2 million that we're going to spend on a building that's listed on our tax card as 1.8 million. Why are we even buying it? Why don't we just take it over from Brick City? My statement to the Board is very simple. Please rein in the spending. It's getting crazy. Taxes are going to skyrocket. But I don't know if you folks are really that concerned about taxes as much as you may be concerned about just simply getting projects done. We can't start, we can't give this money away. And as far as I am concerned, as a taxpayer, there is no way I am going to send my small children to the WB Wicker School. What you'll be doing is helping charter schools. And I know there's at least two that are trying to come into the county right now. That location and the requirements for security that are going to be needed in order to make that thing secure, the school board quite clearly wants to do what they've done many times over, and that's spend a ton of money. Glass railings and glass atriums and so forth. All one need do is look at the, look at the area where our commissioners meet and look at the area where the school board meets. I mean, it's just ludicrous. So, I thought that maybe spending a few words here, we would be able to reach some people to just simply rein in the spending. We've got to stop. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bob Finch?
I'm Bob Finch of 1414 Cartridge Street. I have a view of these meetings, come to these meetings. I keep hearing the same thing. I get tired of people who don't live in my neighborhood telling me how unsafe it is. I live there. It's safe. We don't have any crime problems. But yet, there are people here, for whatever their political agenda, all they want to do is beat down my neighborhood. WB Wicker is a safe school. Give me some recent issues. Don't talk about something that happened 35 years ago. My God, 35 years ago, I had hair. You know, let's get off this. You know, and some of these people should really spend their time. We need taxes, growth. Guess what? The county's doing better than it's ever done before. We have some people who believe in no taxation, a smaller government, but they produce nothing. Growth is where it's at. Incentive is where it's at. You guys are doing a fantastic job. Instead of beating up on the school board, some of you are going to take pride in these people. They're doing a fantastic job. Even to all the issues that to deal with. Not only that, not only that, it's crazy. Stop it. If I, if I would know any better, I think it's race baiting. That's what, that's what I call it. They're getting us here. Look at their faces over there. I call it where it is. We're dealing in a time that they have no real reason for what they're doing and nothing more, destroy a black community, a Latino community, for no reason whatsoever. Show me the crime. Show me the issues. They're not doing that. They get up here and talk about money. But you know what? Historically, Wicker School goes all the way back to Julius Rosenwald School, one of the original schools for blacks in this community. It's the only thing that we have left. If we allow these penny-pinching individuals to take control of our school boards, our county commission, once again, there'll be nothing left here but, be just like Moore County. And you know what Moore County's like? They're now opposing the biggest bond in history down there because they failed to keep up with growth and progress. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Okay. All right. Moving on into old business. The consideration of proposed economic development project, Project Eagle, and you'll find that on page 45 through 58 of your agenda. Ms. Parrish?
Mr. Joyce couldn't be here tonight, so if you recall, this was on the agenda for a public hearing at the last regular board meeting on February 19. This project is Project Eagle, in which it's a million renovations and the purchase of machinery and equipment in an amount of $29,500,000 of taxable investment in Lee County, with the county sharing up to $346,246 of the cost of the project and revenues from the general fund. The project is estimated to create at least 40 new jobs with the average annual wage of As stated, this was on the last agenda for public, for public hearing and now it's back on.
Any questions or comments on this?
No.
Motion.
Can I move that we move forward with support for incentive for Project Eagle?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Item B, request for approval of local grant agreement for one North Carolina fund for, or, excuse me, with Wyeth Holdings LLC. Again, Ms. Parrish?
Yes.
Do I need to excuse myself?
Yes. On this, if you recall, on February 20th, 2017, the county held the public hearing for Project Panda, which was later to be known to be Wyeth Holdings LLC. We have since approved a local incentive for that company, and as part of that, we also, the One NC Grant, we just received the paperwork for that, and so we placed it on the agenda just to be clear that, to grant the chair authority to sign the grant agreement. Essentially, this county just passed through funds from the state.
Question.
I have a motion to allow Commissioner Sloan to recuse himself on this issue.
Yeah, we need to do that. Yeah, we need to do that. Okay. So, there's a motion to allow Commissioner Sloan to recuse himself because of the conflict. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Any questions? This is a pass-through, essentially, just paperwork coming from the state.
Right. It's Max and Brian, so they killed our local incentive.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Item C, consideration of resolution authorizing county manager or designated to direct and supervise the disinterment, removal, and reinterment of graves from Shallowell Cemetery and Mr. Compton. But I want to recognize Mr. Watson also, if he'd like to come up at this time. Do you want to?
Mr. Watson is going to talk on his experience as being a member over there at Shallowell Church and the grave keeper.
And thank you for coming tonight to shed some, you know, front lines light on this.
All right. I'm Warren Watson. I'm the cemetery agent at Shallowell Church. I've been the cemetery agent since 2014. I'm a lifelong member of the church. And Cemetery One is across the road from the church, which started in 1881. Cemetery Two, which is beside the church, was started in 1923. Cemetery Three, which is behind the church, was started in 1941. Using the GIS mapping, I come up, we got about 5.7 acres of cemetery. We have been dealing with DOT. I knew about the project by the time I went on the cemetery agent. I talked to a lady in Raleigh. She was doing the environmental study, and they said there's going to be about 50 graves to move. I walked out there and looked, and I says, hmm. I don't know who looked at that, but I don't believe them. The next thing, we had a meeting with DOT. That was the week I was in Colorado. And they gave me dimensions from Sun Line Road each side, and I went out there and set up stakes and counted 125 graves. When DOT come out there and put up the stakes, about two weeks or a month before they started the other staking, I come up with 147. We met with DOT. We went through the cemetery, and I had blue flags, little survey flags. Wherever DOT says we're going to stop taking here, I put a flag. We went down every road. That way, it took a lot of guesswork off of me, of what we're doing. Went to the other side of the road. They're not taking to the easement there. They're taking to the right-of-way because they're going to have a slope. And the list they come up with is 207 graves, and the paper says 230. Well, we got some potters' graves in it, and we got some places we don't know. We just probed and saw. One problem we have with DOT is they have not counted the potential grave sites that are already reserved by families. There is 150 reserved spots. We come up with an impasse with DOT on moving the graves to our property. They didn't want to reimburse us for the property they was going to take. I don't know what their, there's some rule they had. So, we have hired us a lawyer, and we're waiting now about two and a half weeks to get another meeting with DOT and our lawyers. And we are trying our best to keep anybody that wants to be on this church to be moved, and we have took and surveyed. This street's over here to have enough room to accommodate all those graves. Well, I brought you maps that DOT has provided us. They have worked with us. We have questions. They agreed to put a walkway in front of the church and over there towards where the Jonesboro side of the church, they're going to fix it so it's going to be handicap accessible, get all the way across the road. If we have a funeral, because it's going to be curved and guttered, and it's going to be limited what we can do then. Y'all got any questions for me?
Let me ask you one. Department of Transportation using the existing right-of-way now or they having to purchase right-of-way for this construction project? And the second would be, how about easements? Do they have the existing easements, or they're going to have to purchase those from y'all?
That I don't know about the easements. I'm there. The existing road is right here, and they're taking new right-of-ways to here, and the easement is back here. That's something we're going to have to figure out with the lawyers. They're going, it's going to be a, it's a four-lane divided highway that the drawing shows with bike lanes and a walkway on the other side of the road from Kendale all the way to Thornwood. The bike lanes go all the way to, it's a four-lane divided highway all the way to Avens Ferry. From Avens Ferry to Broadway, it's a two-lane, a three-lane road with center turn lane. I have legal-sized drawings of the whole project that they gave me a couple of months ago, if y'all want to look at them. I have drawings under there that shows the construction, drawings for that project at the church and both sides. It's going to change the dynamics of the church as, when I go to church, I come from Avens Ferry, I'll have to go up to Cormar, turn around, and come back to the church. If I'm leaving the church and we'll go to town, I'm going to have to go down to the, past Burl's House. There's going to be a turn by lane there to go back.
Wow. Okay.
And it's going to be a lot of changes up and down the whole.
Like a super street, sort of, yeah.
Sir?
Wayne, just to clarify for me, you said you had 150 reserved graves by families, and I mean, so is that on the backside where they are proposing to move and reinter those folks in the construction area?
Well, let me kind of explain.
Or some of the reserved spaces in the right-of-way now?
It's in the right-of-way now.
Okay.
In other words, back in 1881, when they started doing it, they were selling the plots, 10 to 25 family plots.
Right.
So, a family bought a whole plot.
Right.
So, and they're splitting some family plots up because they're not going straight down that line. They're going diagonal across the family plots.
Okay.
So, that's why there's so many sticks out there. I have some on irons I found to know where the family plots stop. Then I have the right-of-way and easement stakes the state put in to know where they are cutting in those plots.
Okay.
But the 150 are in the easement and what the right-of-way they're going to take.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead. No, no.
Here's the property that you're going to put the graves back. You know, the ones you're going to move.
Reinter.
Where's the?
This is the B of U drawing, and we've had this surveyed back here. We've had this surveyed, but it was not enough room. In the last two years, we've had this survey for all the graves and potential spots to go, so we've had this surveyed back here, which is used up all reserved.
Are they compensating the church for having to use?
That's what we're trying to.
So, the lawyers for?
That's what the impasse was.
No.
Did you say all the ones that had reserved answer when they're moving, there isn't enough space?
Well, there's not space back here. There's 600 and some spaces back here.
There is enough space.
There's enough space. There was not enough space in this section, right here. But back here, we just had surveyed, there's 680-some grave spots.
But I think part of it, too, is, you know, that that was your growth area for the church, for the cemetery over time, not thinking about 240. Yeah. Okay.
What kind of accessory they providing you for the church that calls, once they finish it? Is that going to be oak?
No, it's just going to be a kind of a walkway. I mean, it'll probably, as, for the asphalt area, there'll be a over concrete right there. And they come up to the walkway, and it'll be handicap accessible, and you can sit on this road, but there'll be a walkway in front of the church.
Do you have existing grave sites available over here on this side now?
It's not reserved. Everything on this side.
It's filled up.
If everything is reserved, it's filled up on this side, except maybe one or two here and there. I have bored on anybody at the church, but that's about it.
All right. Thank you.
Have all the families been asked whether or not they want to be reinterred on the same land, or?
As you know, we contacted Sanford-Hare. One reason we contacted them, we wanted to make sure the word got out. And the Sanford-Hare run, front-page ad for us, or not an ad, but a story. And if they called the church and have a family member in that area, we refer them to DOT. I have not had the one, and I don't know how many's called in yet. That's another thing we're trying to get squared away. But, you know, but I've had some families say, come up here and say, well, I got some kin people here, aunts and uncles and stuff. And the daughter said, my mother's worried where they're going to put them. I says, ain't no problem. We took her back at the back. They picked out a spot. We'll work it out. And we're trying to work with them. But I haven't had, heard, but one family is talking about moving them off-site. But that don't mean I hadn't heard everything yet. DOT has been getting those calls of family members, and I don't know what's going on. DOT has been getting those calls of family members and I don't know what's going on.
And when's your next meeting with DOT, Wayne? Have you set the next meeting for DOT?
When the lawyer calls and gets set up.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that's, for two weeks we've been waiting for a call from the lawyer and
Okay.
we haven't got one.
Okay, all right, thank you for the information, it's very helpful. Okay, yes, sir.
I wanna ask counsel, is there, it would seem to me we want DOT to notify them of what calls they're receiving so that there's not a lot of confusion. And, uh,
What else with the numbers too?
Right.
I can contact, it's in your agenda package and I sent the email, the response from Louis Pay, or I think his first name was Louis Page. So I can contact him and let him know to be in touch with the church and as to who contacts him as well.
I mean, maybe if he could just CC us, you know, on information, just, just so we're.
You know, since we hired a lawyer, DOT won't talk to us, they talk to the lawyer.
Okay.
We all have to go through the lawyer right now.
Yeah, well. We'll, we'll, we'll see what we can find out.
The important thing is that the lawyer gets the information as well. So we can still intervene in that regard and ask them to set that up.
Right, right, yeah, okay. Okay, um, you have before you, uh, item C, um, as we said, um, to, um, have the county manager or designee direct and supervise, um, the disinterment and reinterment of the graves. John, you wanna?
Yes, ma'am, page 114 is the resolution y'all are gonna pass and want to remind the board that under North Carolina general statute 65-106, the legislature pretty much gives you the responsibility of, of monitoring, um, this, what's going on. It's done by the health director. So the resolution would, um, you know, put the health director in charge of making sure that the graves were properly, uh, interned and, and moved and, uh, kinda act as a third party to, uh, make sure that it's done properly. So it's not really a choice the board has, they're directed to do so by the legislature.
Right. Can they compensate us for that action or how's that happen?
Well, we're an extension of the state and, uh, I'm sure they believe that it's just something we need to do.
Doesn't mean I gotta vote on it.
Okay, so, um, you know, of course, as he said, the designated will be Mr. Kane in our health department. Is there a motion?
So much.
Okay, all right, okay. All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item D, consideration of purchase agreement for WVW Whipper Elementary School. And that's on page 117 of your agenda. And, um, I'll let Mr. Crumpton, um, take this, but I will say, um, I have been out of town for a while and I'll get into that, I guess during commission comments. But, um, I've, I've been really, um, upset by some of the things that I've seen, um, about this plan and criticism, um, that is not just criticism, but it's just not factual. So I have asked the manager if he would please address some of those concerns. Because I don't appreciate it when our school board and our superintendent and this board and our manager, its character and integrity is called into question. It's a group of hardworking people in this room and that meets with the Board of Education and they don't deserve to be lied about. So I'll just let the county manager have addressed some of the concerns that we've heard the last couple of weeks, please.
All right, um, just for the record, I've been working on this project now for about three years. So it's not something that, uh, just came up out of nowhere and was done behind closed doors, backdoor deals being done, anything like that. So, um, I'm pretty upset about that, but, uh, I am the professional and will move forward accordingly. Number one, I think the, the purchase of the property needs to be discussed. In talking with Ms. Rumley, we negotiated the deal that, um, we would pay off the loan and the Brick Capital folks would clear 400,000 dollars. That was in addition to purchasing the property. So the property, the building, everything was part of one contract that this board approved in open session. And I gave them all the numbers at the time for that. So the actual payoff, 'cause I got this on Friday, of the loan is 1,667,000 and some change. So I budgeted more in the project than what the payoff probably was gonna be, 'cause that's how you, you're conservative in your budgeting. So the three items together, 2,432,000 dollars. And yes, um, I've had discussions with Michelle about the values of nonprofit property and that they are undervalued. We've had that issue, um, in several instances. To be honest with you, when they're nonprofit, um, we don't pay quite as bit attention to it as we probably should. So in the upcoming revow, um, we've had a discussion about making sure that appraisal looks at these nonprofit properties just like they were gonna be paying full but on taxes.
That's on nonprofit buildings?
On all nonprofit buildings. So, um, I'll be happy to answer more questions about the purchase of the building. And if you want to ask me questions about the project, um, I will be happy to answer those questions as well. I have an item under my report that gives everybody an update of where we are. And I would like to say that I have worked closely with the superintendent to make sure that the construction and the borrowing go hand in hand. And, um, I have provided this board calendars of that. So if there's any uncertainties, I'll be glad to go back the last year and pull out all those calendars again. But I've been through this three or four times now. Discussing this.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move this board approve the purchase and sale of real property agreement for the WVW Whipper School property. And substantially the same on presented at this meeting. And authorize the chair and staff to sign any related documents which may contain modifications as the chair, with the advice of counsel, shall prove to the extent not inconsistent with provisions of the resolution and agreement on the agenda today.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Maybe an honest and new business. A request to lease office A, suite 304 on the third floor of the Buggy Building, Mr. John, uh, Ms. Johnny Martin.
Madam Chair. Good evening. And members of the commission, um, progressive development company would like to request approval to lease office A in suite 304 in the Sanford Buggy Company Building to Stephen Ryan of Atlantic Mortgage and Funding. And also office B in suite 304, um, to Felicia Austin of Foster Care Facilities LLC. Once these are leased, um, upon your approval and the city council approval, we'll unveil it tomorrow night. We'll have one office left, so I will only need to come before you one more time, so I would appreciate your consideration on this. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Martin? Your motion?
So much.
Okay, there is motion, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. And then, okay, well, uh, do we need a, we need a separate motion for the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yeah, so if you'll just, um, if you don't mind just stating, I'm sorry, John.
It's okay.
Cause we do have separate, yeah, right.
Okay. I'm requesting approval to lease office B in suite 304 in the Sanford Buggy Company Building to Felicia Austin of Foster Care Facilities LLC and they are an in-home healthcare provider.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should.
No, it's okay.
Okay, all right, is there a motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, item C, Lee County Cost of Community Services Presentation, Mr. Bill Stone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. County Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to, um, have a part in unveiling the cost of community services study that we've been taking part of in collaboration with Mount Olive University. Uh, this study looks at public funding, uh, for services depending on the various type of land use. And we thought this study would be, uh, very appropriate and educational now at this time, especially as we look at issues like farmland preservation, land use and really what the future landscape and makeup of our county will look like. So tonight, um, Mr. Edward Olive from Mount Olive University is here with me and he's gonna be coming up here in just a second to give you a brief overview of the presentation. I also wanted to recognize Ms. Lisa Minter and Finance Department and also Mary Yao and the Tax Office for their support in helping make this study possible as they work very closely to get Mr. Olive and his colleagues the information they needed. So I will turn it over to Mr. Olive, uh, for the presentation, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I appreciate Bill and his office working with us as well as the county manager and appreciate the county commissioner's support of that as well. Bill provided this evening a copy, I know he sent the executive summary ahead of time, so that was in your packets, but you do have a printed copy with you tonight. So that's got the full study in it that you're more than welcome to, uh, utilize and prove. Another thing that I'll say upfront, the University of Mount Olive did receive a grant from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture's Ag Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund. So this, uh, project, this study was completed at no cost to the county, no cost, uh, to taxpayers here in Lee County. See if I can work this thing. There you go, there it was. Power button, I found. So as we start, uh, I know a lot of you are probably wondering what a cost of community services study is. A few years back, I believe it was 2011, Bill, we had the, uh, the university had a part in the Ag Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund that was completed here in the county. So that was completed and, and not necessarily a recommendation, but kind of a product of that, uh, plan is the cost of community services study. So that's where we take a look at different land uses within Lee County, uh, look at the different expenditures within Lee County thanks to the tax office and the finance office, uh, and see how those compare and, and kinda see where Lee County shakes and all that. As we look across the nation, um, farmland is lost at, at a rate of about 50 acres per hour. So, uh, pretty astronomical, um, when you think about it. And of course, I, I'm sure y'all can, um, you know, can kinda fathom that with the proximity y'all are to Greensboro and Raleigh and, and other large areas. But that certainly is, uh, something that we're seeing across the nation. North Carolina lost 9,000 farms and over a million acres in agricultural land in the last 15 years. So just to put that in perspective. As we look at, at the funds, we're looking at one snapshot, so we're looking at one year. We use the 2015, 2016 year, we also use the comprehensive annual financial report that was provided by, by the finance department to base these numbers and to base this information. The hope is that this will be used as a tool for growth and to look at balance between open lands, farmland, um, even forest land and development. So that's really the goal behind these studies. And of course, provide county leaders, uh, an understanding of those land uses and how those work together. So with this study, we evaluated three primary land uses. The first is residential, the second, commercial industrial, and the third, agricultural and forestry. As we look at Lee County, for each dollar of revenue that comes in through taxes, through whatever, uh, you know, way it, the, the funds do come into the county, a dollar and 32 cents is spent to provide services to residents. Now that is nothing groundbreaking, that's nothing out of the ordinary because of course, uh, cattle don't go to schools, right? We don't use the tax money for, to educate cows and, and sheep and goats and crops and all those things. So that's, uh, nothing out of the unusual. Commercial here in Lee County, for each dollar of revenue that came in, 47 cents, uh, were spent to provide services. And this is a little bit different here for Lee County. Farms and forests, for each dollar of, of revenue that came in, only 31 cent was spent. Usually those two, commercial and agricultural are transpro, transposed. Uh, so that was something neat here in Lee County. You know, when economic developers look at, at opportunities for counties to grow, a lot of times we look at commercial and industrial properties. But this just goes to show you that agriculture is, uh, does have a seat at that table too and, and does play a part in that economic growth as well. This, and, and this is one of the tables from the study, so this shows you, uh, the total expenditures, the total revenues, the percentage for each of those. Uh, and this is where those percentages, where those numbers, uh, were derived. 10% of Lee County's total value added income. So all the value added income, um, came from those two, came from agriculture and came from forestry. Uh, so we look at the economic impact of commercial industrial, certainly looking back at that table before, certainly there is a net impact. And again, there's a little higher impact here in Lee County for agriculture and forestry as well. The other takeaway that I, that I hope, um, I can leave you with this evening is the combined net gain of those two land uses of commercial industrial and ag forestry helped to float the residential costs. So they helped to cover the, the deficit, if you will, um, that comes with those residential costs. And again, that's something that's done, you know, that, that's pretty common in all the counties across the state. All the ones that we've had a study with except one, uh, have had over a dollar in expenses for those residential costs. So I hope you will enjoy this, I hope this is something that will be, uh, helpful and effective for the county. And, uh, if there's any questions that you might have, my contact information's here. Again, I'm Edward Olive, I serve as Associate Director for the Agribusiness Center at the university. And, uh, we were the grant recipient for the, uh, Ag Development Farmland Preservation Trust Funds that provided the study.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I wish you went back about 45 years on that study and said, how many we've lost? And I was born growing up in Lee County, everybody had a five or 10 acre farm they did. Had a garden and everybody had a little tobacco patch. That's how, set the schools, kid, kids are schooling for all the year, they buy the clothes with that little tobacco patch.
Absolutely, and that's something we've seen all across the state. Are those, uh, smaller farms kinda turning into bigger farms and, and more people leaving the farm. So that's why we need to, uh, you know, I, I, I like to eat, I don't know about y'all, but I certainly like to eat. So, uh, wanna try to keep those farmers in business and, and keep letting them provide us three meals a day.
Look, thank you very much. I, I know when Bill first brought this to our attention, that we farm, so, you know, it, it's special, uh, to me. But I'm, I'm excited to get to read this tonight, so, um, thank you very much.
Absolutely, if you've got any questions, feel free to reach out to us.
Okay, we certainly will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And Bill, thank you too for orchestrating all of this and of course, for Ms. Minter and Michelle. Okay? All right, uh, Ms. McGee, really good thing, I'm excited about. Um, the request for approval of contract with DLP, um, and, okay, so I don't do what I accuse other people do in Duke Life Point? Is that correct? I'm looking up back there at Wendy.
It is.
Uh, Delina, okay, all right.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight I bring before you a contract with DLP Central Carolina Medical Group to staff an employee wellness center. This is the second part of our wellness program. I have our wellness coordinator, Wendy O'Quinn with us and I have Delaina Sattler, she's the operations manager with the practices and, at the hospital. If you have questions, I'm here to help answer questions. But we started a wellness program in 2012, November 2012. And Wendy O'Quinn was our wellness coordinator and this is where we offer the opportunity to all of our employees to have a wellness screen, have blood drawn for them to know their health. to have a wellness screen, have blood drawn for them to know their health statistics, and we have them in a database that go through the hospital. And we have seen a reduction in our cost since we started the wellness program. We saw a reduction in our costs over the last five years. We've pretty much been really, really good in reducing our costs. But this is the second phase of the wellness program that we were implementing, is to open a wellness center for our employees. And what we will do is we will provide our employees with, like, a care, like if you wake up and you're sick, you can run to the wellness center and come right back to work or whatever. But we feel like this will help us to continue in our reduction in costs. I think this year, we've got some not-so-great news, but we have our broker working on it to, to help us get our costs down more. We had a lot of claims this past year, and that's affecting our renewals, but we're still working on those renewals to make sure that, hopefully, they, we get them down lower than they were. But this is going to be a great thing for our employees. It's going to reduce time away from work, and it's going to be something that they can go and be seen and come right back to work. We're going to, the wellness center will open for three hours a day, five days a week. It will be staffed by a nurse practitioner and a medical assistant, and it will be licensed and insured by the, by the Duke LifePoint Hospital system. And then our goal in the future, as we see the usage increase, is to use this for our drug testing programs, our workers' comp programs, but that, we've got to start slow and then move, move up to go to that. But that's what our goal is for the future, and I'm asking you tonight to look at the contract and approve the contract for the wellness center. We hope to open the wellness center on April 3rd, have our open house on April 2nd, and open the wellness center on May, on April 3rd.
And the board did approve half of that budget this year. We're just opening late, so now we're getting all the contract worked out and the total cost, so.
Is this contract, like, open for bid each year?
Well, we can bid it, and we did, we did check with others to find interest. There's, believe it or not, not a lot of interest around, but we did compare this to what Moore County was paying for theirs, and it's very comparable. Actually, ours is a pretty good deal.
It's very convenient to have a wellness center, because I am fortunate to work for a company that does. And, and I've met Ms. O'Quinn, who I've known my whole life, but actually at work, when they have health affairs and wellness centers, and if the program works like the one does at Pfizer, it'll benefit the county substantially.
Is there a potential cost savings that you're looking at, long-term?
In our, in our claims, yes, sir.
In our claims.
Which would be, are there any estimations?
What'd you save at Moore County? Typically, it pays for itself in the first year.
It really pays for itself, because if you think about an average doctor's visit's $175, and if we see 12 patients a day, five days a week, 52 weeks a year, we're talking $500,000 if we saw that many patients. But also, what I saw in Moore County, when we started it in Moore County, was the cost in your labs. Labs that you pay at the doctor are so expensive, but when you get it direct from LabCorp, the costs are so much cheaper. We'll save a lot of money in labs.
And it's a dollar?
Yes, we'll save a lot there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the contract with DLP Central Carolina Medical Group.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Can you give us the dates one more time, Ms. McGee?
Okay, we're planning to have our open house April 2nd, that's a Monday after we come back after Easter, that morning time, for people to meet the nurse practitioner, to get to know her, and to see the clinic. And then we plan to open for business on Tuesday, on April 3rd.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any more comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. And thank you, ladies.
Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Item F, request for approval of a memorandum of understanding for temporary land use. It's long, Mr. Compton?
I apologize that this actually comes after they're already using the property, but it took a while for us to get this agreement together, but we didn't feel too bad about them going ahead and using the property, because they are building the road extension through there and spending a lot of money on their own, and we didn't want to hold that up. So they're just planning on using a 75-foot, basically right away, right behind the property, which eventually, you know, we hope to develop anyway. So we don't, we don't really see a big deal with this, and Ms. Parrish was able to get this agreement and get them to go forward, so. We thank you.
Yes.
I move that we accept the agreement as proposed by council to allow them to use the property.
Okay, any comments or questions? It's going up fast, they're doing a lot of work quickly. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Excuse me. Consideration of revisions of the county's financial policies regarding available fund balance percentages, Ms. Minter.
Hey. Hey, how are y'all?
Doing well. Good to see you.
Good. As you know, several years ago, the board adopted financial policies for the county. One of those policy references, fund balance. We, over the last few years, have had several discussions about where our fund balance percentages are. Our original policy had us with a floor of 14% and a goal of 18% for our available fund balance percentage. We are coming to you, asking you that you consider raising that. If you talk to the LGC, the minimum that they look at is an 8% fund balance, which is one month of expenditures to make sure you have cash flows. However, six to seven months out of the year, our expenditures exceed our revenues. So while the 8% is the absolute minimum they look at, if you read their documentation, they recommend that you be in the average of your population group for your available fund balance percentage. And if you look on page 168 of your package, you will see our population group. The average for our population group is 31.57% at this, for this year ending June 30th of 2016. You will see, if you review that, that we were at 17.92. We have the second lowest in our population group. Even if we go to meet the max that we're proposing at 24, you will see that we don't move up much at all. So we would like for the board to consider us moving ahead with that. When you did the property tax increase in 2016, we put 1.5 cents in that tax rate increase to do pay-as-you-go projects. By doing that, you're building your fund balance, although this year you've spent quite a bit of that to do some purchasing of properties that have come available to us. By building our fund balance numbers, it gives us that ability when opportunities come available to be able to move quickly, to take advantage of it. Other reasons, if you have a major storm, like we had the tornadoes that came through, FEMA is a reimbursement situation. It took us well over a year, year and a half to ever get our money back from FEMA, so that fund balance enables us to fund those. We've recently been informed by Social Services that the state is going to be doing additional audits of Medicaid and, um, project, eligibility audits. If they find that we made a mistake in determining eligibility, they can come back on us for the full cost of that mistake. So if you have a long-term care patient, that can add up very quickly, and we need to have funds available to pay those things back, which right now, we have nothing to pay back, okay? There are some counties, they either have received their letters or are getting ready to receive their letters, and we luckily enough are not on that list. But...
I move if we adopt this policy right away.
Thank you.
Before we get any letters.
What percentage are we at presently?
20.8%.
I'm sorry?
20.8%.
What, present 28%?
That says of December, I mean, as of June 30th of 2017.
So 24 increases in terms of cash value?
I have not read those numbers, because it's a constantly changing number based on our budgeted expenditures, so I would have to go back and figure that exactly, and it's available.
The, the, is this the first time I've been involved in one of these things?
Yes, we haven't changed the policy since I've been here.
Yeah, so I'm still wrapping my head around, is there, I just wondering if there was, there a possibility that we can do, look at this again in two weeks, just so I can learn a little bit more? I'm not a guest at the present. I'm just wondering if I can just give time just to learn this, this particular nuance.
It's the pleasure of the board.
I like making a motion of pleasure of the board, if they don't mind waiting, just delaying this until our next meeting, just so I can just get my head wrapped around the entirety of changing our percentages.
Well, let me, Madam Chair, would you be willing to allow us to know what your concerns are, because we're not going to have another board meeting until April? And so any discussions you have regarding this sort of puts the rest of us in the dark in terms of what your concerns...
I think just lack of understanding at present is my main concern. That, that's the only, that's the only thing. I just want to make sure that if I agree to it, I do it with confidence. It's, it's, and I've only had a short time to start learning, so at this point in time, I don't have any against.
I see.
It's just comfortability for me. That's your reason.
I know, I just went through this with Triangle J, and they were asked, and it was recommended to hold three months' worth of operating expense, which is substantial.
Kind of like Ray's...
Oh, yeah.
I would draw my motion for until the next meeting.
If it doesn't throw anything off.
No, we just, we would like to have that, you know, so that when we prepare the budget, we, we can put the new policy in, in the new budget document. So this just gets us out ahead of it. It also helps us plan, you know, I brought the, the draft of the CIP so that the board can see that, you know, discuss, go ahead and discuss the total debt that we're about to have outstanding at 103, roughly, million dollars. So yes, we've basically have doubled our debt outstanding with the community college projects and the Wicker School project. So yes, it is high, and we will not be borrowing for a while. So we feel like we need to have more cash on hand to address these pay-as-you-go things where we have roofs. We have concerns about this building, we don't know what it's going to cost us yet, but you remember that this, original part of this building was built in 1933, we've had some recent water leaks up on the third floor, your IT director is extremely concerned about his servers up there, and we may have to address that. We won't be able to go and borrow that money to do whatever it takes to repair that. So we're just a little, we're, we get paid to be conservative. I know that people don't think that having 103 million dollars in outstanding debt would be conservative, but it is much lower than the surrounding counties in total out debt. And go ahead and discuss a little bit further, it's, we shouldn't be comparing ourselves to the surrounding counties really about our tax rate, because we don't have their tax base.
Exactly.
Our tax base is half of Chatham and Harnett, and Moore County has a tax base that's two and a half times ours, at 12 billion, ours is 5 billion. So people, it's interesting, when it comes to paying, people want to compare us to those tax rates. But then, when I go to Chamber of Commerce meetings, people say, "Why aren't we spending and doing things like Chatham and Harnett and Moore?" So we're not them, we're our own county. So that's why we need to have our own policies that better reflect what we are, a smaller, you know, county that doesn't have quite the tax base. And that's also why it's important to grow the tax base, and grow it mainly in the industrial, manufacturing, residential area, because they require less of our services. So that's why economic development is important, to grow that tax base and relieve the citizens who live here of that burden. That's why they call it the Machinery Act, that's why it's geared towards trying to get business and industry to pay most of your taxes. And if you went back to 1936 or '37, whenever it was enacted, the idea was is that business and industry would pay a majority of your property tax, and now the roles flipped, where in our county, it's probably 60-40, where residents are, if I had to guess, I'm guessing right now, but it's flipped. Where I came from, it was 80-20, 80% residents paying, you know, versus 20, the tax burden, and that's why their rate was the highest in the state, because they didn't have that industrial base, they didn't have the retail base to, to keep their tax rate down. So it's tough to compare counties to counties. You know, we have different ADMs, we have different issues with demographics, and then of course, then the real burden is your per capita income compared to what your per capita tax rate is. So, you know, we have to be careful with that, and I know the, I've had just about everybody sitting at my left say, "I'd like to lower the tax rate." I'd like to lower the tax rate, too, it's a lot, it's a lot more fun lowering the tax rate than it is raising, and I can tell you that. But, you know, we've made these commitments to education, and if, and if you go to other meetings across the state, what is the number one burden counties have right now? Is paying for school construction.
If I could add one thing, I went to the Executive Committee meeting with SAGA last week, and Mayor Mann made a comment, he was asked to come and speak in Cumberland County, and the question came up, how did we have the tax growth that we, or the, the tax base growth that we've had was probably in the last few years is close to $400 million versus in Cumberland County, they only had 50 million. And they want to know what we're doing here in Lee County. And it has to do with the, you know, the people being willing, the private-public partnerships that, and, and the city and the county working together. I mean, a lot of that's retail, but there is industry coming here, or there is expansion. And it's creating jobs, and when you create jobs, you bring people here, you bring residential construction, and you grow your community. And we're trying to do it in the right way, at the same time, we're keeping education in, in the forefront, and that's gotten a bit acknowledged, instead of all the criticism that we continually hear and read in the letters to the editor.
The one last thing I want to talk about your fund balance is tomorrow, and Wednesday, Lisa and I will be traveling the county with Standard Empores and Moody's for our bond rating, or the sale, on April 18th. So, you know, they come in, are this, I don't, have they ever come here before?
Yes, they came back when we did, I want to say maybe the first COPS, if not the first, it was definitely the second COPS, they came both, I, both for at least one, I think it was just one of the agencies came down.
One of the first questions they'll ask us is, "What is your fund balance policy? And how does your board feel about, you know, maintaining a fund balance?" Because that, what they're concerned about then is economic downturn, and if you, and when we went through the recession, we had to cut our budget 10%. And I was reading back through that budget message on Friday, matter of fact, I read through all of my budget messages on Friday, as I was being asked questions about our financial condition and borrowing and all that kind of stuff. And we would not have survived those three or four years without our fund balance. We, we would have not been able to make the debt payments that we had, and now you have a higher debt load. So carrying a higher fund balance, so when those economic downturns occur, instead of paying, you know, that fund balance for capital, it's going to be the cash that keeps you, you know, rolling, so you don't have to cut as much as we had to cut before. You know, it was, it impacted services, it obviously impacted a lot of people, and fund balance helps you get through that. So it's, it's important. The important part is, for your county, some of the, some of the counties that are in our population category, to, to be honest with you, are on the coast. So we shouldn't be comparing ourselves to them, because they're going to carry a very high fund balance because of storm damage, beach, beach renourishment, other issues that they, that they have there, that, once again, we shouldn't be comparing ourselves to them, because we're not them. So...
We haven't even got into concerns that we might have regarding school security. That's on the horizon, and it, almost every county around us is having to deal with it.
That's true. Anything else? Just, just kind of, maybe to help you out, I mean, you know, I wanted to clarify something with you, Lisa, you know, in our abstract... You know, in our abstract, you know, the 8% equates to roughly a month.
Yes.
So.
Three months for the year, roughly 24%.
24%. I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, it didn't change, or, so that, that's, that's the way I look at it, Andre, is, you know, I mean, you run a business like we do. And, you know, we keep a pretty high fund balance for our family business, to repair things that break down, to fix things, you know, and we borrow money for the big expenditures. But things happen, you know, and, and it's just kind of like sort of the Dave Ramsey, I don't know if you've ever listened to him or whatever, but you know, keep in, you know, three to six months' worth of your salary in the bank to, to, to cover emergencies. And, you know, just to go back in history a little bit and remind folks, I see one school board member here, you know, we, when we went through whether to address Lee County High School, you know, one of the criticisms that we heard was that school had gotten so rundown, and there was no denying that. But when the school board has to make decisions between, you know, sprucing up the building or buying books and paying teachers, I mean, Cameron, you know, you know, I mean, you have to buy the books and pay the teachers. And, and so I, I think, you know, that's, that's one of the things, one of the things personally I feel very strongly about is we need to have the money to keep our buildings up and not let them go into disrepair. And so we need that fund balance, not just for the emergencies, which I hope we don't, in our lifetime, don't see another tornado like we had come through here, but that does happen. But more importantly, you know, for things like roofs and HVAC systems and rewiring and replumbing, some of these great old buildings that still have good bones but need a lot of work. And, and that's just the way I look at it, you know, to, to increase that floor so that we can have that safety net for downturns, but also to pay as we go and not have to borrow money for an air conditioning system.
And we won't be doing anything immediately to try to get us straight up to 24%. The biggest thing is it raises the floor so that when Mr. Compton and I work on the budget and are trying to figure out what we can do as far as one-time expenditures go, we know we have to adjust how much we can use so that we don't drop below a new floor. And then hopefully with the one and a half cents and other things that we can grow it so that we can take advantage of opportunities that come or cover if we have needs or downturns.
You brought up the schools, the, the schools do carry a big fund balance. They carry a very small fund balance because we are their fund balance.
So we're just trying to slow and halve that over time?
Yes, we would work towards increasing it to that new goal over time. So whenever we evaluate different projects that come up or where we are, that it slowly we would try to get up to 24, but it won't be a drastic thing that we go from 20.8 to 24 in one budget year.
I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say, and they say it's keep hauling, cut, cut, cut. I've sat on this board when we had to cut, and we cut. So, you know, I, I don't get excited when they get up and go to hauling, cut, cut, cut.
Okay, we're going to keep going, I'm going to put my motion back on.
Okay.
Put your motion back on.
All right. We'll do it now.
Okay. All right.
Drop this resolution.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for the input.
We'll be tickled to be able to share with Moody's and S&amp;P that you made that change tonight to our policy.
Good. Okay. Item H, request for approval of resolution authorizing certain staff to accept donations on behalf of the county, Ms. Mentor.
Yes, under North Carolina Journal Statute 150A-12, the Board can, has the authority to accept donations of real or personal property to the governing board of commissioners to use for any statutorily approved use it has. You can also grant authority to accept certain donations to staff members, and basically we are asking you to adopt a resolution that would allow the candidate and manager to accept donations of personal property up $2,000 by resolution. Any donations of real property will still come back to you regardless of the value. We are just simply asking for this, just for the speed of process, that, you know, if somebody has something they want to donate to a department, that we can take it quickly and not belabor your proceedings.
Only thing I would add, now, is make sure there are no strings attached.
Correct.
And that it works.
Exclusion.
And that it works.
Well, it'll be working, we're selling either way, but.
Okay. Any more questions on this item?
Motion approved.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, Spring Thaw Fine Forgiveness Program, Lee County Libraries, Ms. Beth List, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And, and gentlemen, this, this is something I should have brought since I knew about it to the, to the board's attention earlier, but you have it at your seat. It was not included in the agenda. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for adding this to the agenda, I appreciate it. The program you have before you is of a time-sensitive nature, partly due because the Spring Equinox is tomorrow, and it's in keeping with our theme, and also because I'm eager to get this program rolling because it's going to benefit the library and the community as a whole. The Lee County Libraries is seeking approval from the Lee County Board of Commissioners for a library account cleanup program. We are calling it the Lee County Libraries Spring Thaw Month. It's slated to take place from March 21st through April 21st of this year. The Library Board of Trustees approved the program with the objective to encourage library cardholders who may have fines or lost items on their cards to clean up their accounts and become active library users once again. The first part of our Spring Thaw program will encourage library cardholders to return items with amnesty, no penalty, and allow them to bring the items back to the library, clean their accounts off, and start afresh. The other part of that would be to allow them to actually replace the item if they find it themselves, rather than us charging them the full price value of replacement. A lot of DVDs, we paid 25, $30 for, they could probably pick up at the Walmart bin for $5. That would bring, if they bring it back, we'd put it back in our system for circulation, and their, their account would be cleaned off. A lot of our items are, we have actually 21,145 lost items recorded right now in our system. We've never cleaned up our records at the library, something I inherited, and we're trying to get done now. It takes up a lot of staff time on a daily basis. We have patrons coming in, and we have to explain to them why they have $100 of fines on their card from 1986. So, some of these items are also playing hide-and-seek on our stacks. We're actually in the middle of doing an inventory of the library, pulling records of items that are in our fiction section, for instance, and determining whether they're actually on our shelves and sitting on a patron's account, and preventing them from coming to the library, so that's something we're cleaning up as well. The other side of the program is a fine forgiveness and match element. We want to encourage patrons to renew or update their accounts by making a payment on their current fines with a forgiving match of 50%. This would only apply to their fines, not to the lost items. We charge 25 cents a day for lost books, a dollar per day for DVDs, so we're asking people to come in, make a payment on their account, and we'll match it by 50%. Pretty much, from what I've read from other libraries doing this, it's actually revenue generating, it won't hit our budget except in a positive way, because those people that would normally not come in to pay their fines might be encouraged to come in and actually do it this time around. By matching their payment with a forgiveness, we're showing the community that we get it. They were saying that we know money's tight, we want them to come back, we want them to use the library and benefit from everything that we're offering now. Our big ask, which I think Mr. Compton, I'm not sure if the whole commissioners know about it, or just it's been talked about, we migrated to the NC Cardinal consortia in 2013, and when we did that, all of our fines from our old system migrated over with us, and they're now listed on patron accounts as grocery. So patron comes in, they have $20 in fines on their card, staff has no idea what, what it's in reference to. Trying to convince somebody to pay $20 on their library account is very difficult when you can't tell them why. So we'd like to actually do a mass dump of all of those fines and clean up accounts and start afresh for those people that had fines prior to 2013. And I, trust me, for the last three days, I've been trying to come up with numbers to give you, because I'm sure your big question is how much money are we going to forgive? It's impossible right now unless I spend hours and hours going through 95,000 accounts that we have in the system right now to figure out where are duplicates, are the items actually, do they exist, do they begone, do they belong to Cumberland County, which happened today? So it's, it's, the staff time investment is actually, it would far outweigh what would actually be forgiving overall.
Losing more money.
Mm-hmm.
They've spent a lot of time. This was brought to my attention by the, the previous library director, and, you know, we tried to figure out a way that you can't, you can't get somebody to collect, you can't collect it when you can't tell them what it's for.
Exactly.
So those things really need to be written off anyway, so we need to get everything cleaned up and kind of start from scratch and, and head in the right direction here. And I don't think we've ever booked any of this receivable, so it's not going to take, it's not going to take any money out of our pocket, but the board still has to, has to approve it, and, you know, eventually we'll end up bringing the list back to you of what.
Let me clean it up, let's go.
That's what it is.
If you find my name, please tell me. But no, I commend you all on this taking that home.
It's been a task.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. List does a fantastic job. The library is, is just got a breath of fresh air, and a lot of people are using it. And, and programs like this, you know, there are people that have lost a book or forgot to return one, and they just get embarrassed, and they just don't go back, you know, and so, yes, I like the clean slate idea, and everybody can start fresh, so.
Speaking of clean slate, in spring, there's some organization that's supposed to help with the outside. I think, you know, please get in touch with us, spring is here.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Grandma.
I'll see you in a couple weeks. Okay. Managers report. Oh, I'm sorry, the financial report, Ms. Mentor.
Hey, on page 175, oh, excuse me, no, yeah, 175, you will find the monthly financial report for the month ended June, January 31st, 2018. As you will see, we are still running a little behind on our sales, on our property tax collections and reviewing expenditures, our target's 58.33%. You still have basically some of the same departments succeeding, finance due to audit fees, strategic services due to maintenance contracts, IT is due to annual maintenance contracts, equipment purchases and insurance premiums, general services is doing, due to large projects being completed, sheriff is exceeding due to, excuse me, exceeding due to capital purchases and temporary salaries. Juvenile detention is at 59.36%. As y'all know, that one kind of fluctuates from year to year on us, so I am monitoring that now, and will bring you a budget amendment if needed before the end of the fiscal year. So that is the report for January. Any questions on January before I move to February? Now, I apologize for bringing two months at one time, it was just a timing issue with board meeting schedules. So on page 179, you will find the beginning of the report for February. As of February, we're still running about 3% behind the same period last year for tax collections. In expenditures, you're at 66.67%. You'll see a few departments have dropped off just because of the way the expenditures balance out. Juvenile detention has jumped to 77.72%. So again, as you know, we'll be monitoring that and probably bringing a budget amendment to you sooner than I would have thought at the end of January. As far as emergency medical services go, you'll see there at 71.28%. Remember, we made a large payment to them to assist with the purchase of a new ambulance. So that should, that, that will balance out by the end of the year. You also have the sales tax reports, starting on page 182, for the, through the month of December collections. You will see that we are well above halfway of our budget at this point, which is where we should be after December. And you'll see, if you look at page 183, we're still looking at an excess of a 7% growth overall for just the county. And then if you look at countywide, we're pretty close to that, too, at 7.1% overall. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
And Ms. Zhao says that she will make her budget.
Yes.
For tax collections, because I, we did meet with her last week, and.
Okay. All right.
I think it's just a numbers issue.
Thank you.
We're all, we're going to be all right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any managers report?
Yes, ma'am, starting with the pole and road, water, all contracts are in place. We have two easements that we're trying to obtain from Chara slash Green Meadows LLC on the two roads, Burchard and Hawken. So as soon as we get those easements, we'll be in good shape. Then we're having a community meeting coming up. I forgot to write that down, when, when are we having that meeting?
April 4th, it'll be Wednesday.
April 4th.
We haven't informed the site yet, right? Probably the 4th or 5th, 6th, 7th.
Yeah. So April 4th, 5:30, to update the residents of, you know, how the construction's going to work and get them to sign some agreements where we can access their property, and also with the understanding that they'll be responsible for maintenance once the warranty goes away on those lines. That, are there lines that go from the meter to their house? Let's, let's qualify that. Courthouse renovations, and getting ready to have a phone meeting with Mosley. They're pretty much finished with their first crack at all the surveys, and we should have the report, preliminary report from them for the second meeting in April. I met with Withers and Ravenel on Friday. Both Ms. Parrish and, and Ms. Gamble were there, along with Mr. Silverman, and we actually talked about the Greenway Trail that the city is putting in. And we have, did I say, what did I say? I did, I did get it right, right?
You got it.
Sorry, you scared me there. But it was an interesting design that the city had proposed, and we weren't real fond of it. So we've asked them to try to consider a different route through the park, mainly because the, the design they showed us on Friday had a real incline coming out of the bottom of that hole, and really it would be better if we could move it closer to the tennis courts and keep the elevation, so we're not going up and down quite as much, and, and basically cutting off part of the property we can never access again. So that was the big deal there, and then they also told, talked, we also talked about some of the other issues at the other parks, and they're getting their data together, and we should have, we should have some things to us pretty soon, you know, some draft things. Now, Wicker School and the courthouse and the parks and recreation bonds, and I want to remem, I want the board to remember that we are buying, borrowing $5 million above the elementary school to address the courthouse and the, and parks, and the, everybody involved changed their mind and decided that I had to give them a budget for that $5 million. So that budget is on page 191, and it was my best guess of where that money was going to go. So I want the board to understand that this is, this will end up probably in the perspective that goes out to the people who are going to buy the bonds. We do have some flexibility in here on what we do with it, but I had to give them an idea. And so just based on some preliminary discussions with Mosley and Withers and Ravenel, this is what we came up with.
John, oh, just real quick, you've got $400,000, $500,000. The $200,000, is that Temple?
Yes, ma'am. I put Temple in there, I had to fix that.
I just wanted to clarify. Okay. The $200,000 is Temple Ball Park. Okay, I, I figured it was, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay? Sorry.
All right, so let's talk about, a little bit about the budget for, for the Wicker School. That is on page 190. So I've had this similar budget in place for about 18 months, as I checked my email today. And yes, it has changed, it had, it went up a little bit based on the architect's estimate of construction. So I had a question posed to me, and I'm hoping I can find it all. I had a question posed to me about what, you know, what are kind of like standardized costs right now for construction for school? costs right now for construction for school, per pupil cost, and cost per square foot and that kind of stuff? So I actually have something, I think. Yes, I do. So DPI is a wonderful thing when you learn how to navigate their website. And you can pull actually, there?
Yeah, yeah.
That's right. You can actually pull cost of recent school projects. So going back to 2010, the average cost per square foot was $140 a square foot for new construction. In 2017, it was $200,000 per square foot. And in, back in February, when I was in Winston-Salem talking with architects, I was told to take that 200 or whatever we thought our cost was going to be and go ahead and add 10 to 15% for 2018. And that was before the president announced tariffs on steel. So you're gonna get, in the neighborhood, 225 to 230 a square foot. Now, my numbers, I'm not an expert in this and I, I ran some numbers based off the square footage. The total square footage of this school, if you include the gym, the cafeteria, the auditorium, both floors of the current building and both floors of the new building is over 125,000 square feet. It's a big school. And remember, this is, this board told the Board of Education that they were only going to get one school. And so they went from basically building a school to a school and a half. So it's 900, they're building a school with 969 seats. That's the capacity. Big elementary school. So the bid turned out to be $221 a square foot. That can be a little misleading because we're renovating a school and we're renovating an auditorium and we're renovating a gym. And when I tried to get that breakdown today, I couldn't get it because they're still talking with the contractor about lowering costs. And I'll tell you that, based on the discussion today, they are going to the auditorium quite a bit to lower costs there and obviously the new building, because there's not a whole lot to cut in the existing building. So that works out. I can find the rest of my numbers here. I got the paperclip on it. Now, the per seat cost, and remember, this is just a one-time, you know, this is just annual, so it doesn't take into account the life of the building, but you're looking at a per seat cost of $28,781. So I didn't have much to compare it to.
Over time?
Twenty-eight thousand, $28,781. So I took, I took a couple of projects from 2017 and did the same thing. And a Wake County Elementary School worked out to $28,637 and one in Roan Salzberry was about the same. So all the numbers are kind of in that ballpark, which leads me to believe that, you know, these, pretty much the contractors, as I was told, these are people who build schools, most of them. And the sixth bid, this is what they do. So they know the going rate per square foot that's out there. So the low bid is in that range of what you would expect in the current market. And the current market is expected to continue to go up.
One other thing too to keep in mind is, if I'm not mistaken, the low bid is.
They are.
Company in San.
Yes, they are.
And he was what, 2.5% over the engineer's estimate?
Yes, sir.
And if you look around statewide, and I don't want to department transportation, if you're 10% or less, they'll award the bid. Board usually awards a bid at this 10% or less over the estimate. So I mean, that depends on the project, you know?
Well, I did ask Mr. Height on Thursday, when I saw him at the Board of Education meeting, how he felt about the bids and he felt, he said he felt good. And I can tell you that talking with my other county manager brethren out there, you know, they told me that it would be over. From our estimate, it was only eight months old. This estimate that Mr. Height gave me was eight months old. So I know that Chatham County's getting ready to go out to bid. They're very nervous about their upcoming bid because they wanted to already be out to bid and they're not going to be out to bid till June. And they're doing an elementary school, a community college building and a high school.
A big barrier in any kind of bid is how much work the contractor has on it.
Yeah.
How much work is out there?
And there's a lot out there.
Lot going on. Permanent issuance, valuation and table was happening, just in Lee County.
Oh, yeah. It's really, it's really take that.
There's a lot going on. So as I said, we'll be meeting with the, going back to the, the bond calendar. We are meeting with the bond agencies tomorrow and Wednesday. The LGC reviews our financing on April 10th. We sell the bonds on April 18th. We close on the Wicker School property on April 25th. And then we close on the bonds on May 2nd. So you're probably asking, why are we closing on the Wicker School before we're going to get our money to pay for it? Well, we had quite an argument with our bond counsel, because I didn't want to do it. And he finally just said, we're gonna do it. We need you to do it. So there are a total of 14 parcels that we will have purchased over this time, 13 properties, so to speak, and then this last one is the 14th. And they are requiring us to merge all the parcels into one for the borrowing. That is so that they, it makes it easier for the D to trust. We have one D to trust, it covers one parcel. And, you know, going back to, you know, the purchase of this property, anytime you buy property, you have to pay off the loan, you know, whether it's you or, or the seller, there's someone's going to pay off that loan. We paid off the loan last week at Broadway Optimus. So it's a standard thing. You sell your home, you know, you look at what you owe and what you want to make above what you owe and that's hopefully what you're going to set your price. Well, that's how Kate structured her ask from us, you know, for what we were going to buy the property for. I didn't see anything wrong with it, to be, to be honest with you. You know, actually, by delaying the closing a couple of months, she given us the benefit of about $123,000. So, you know, there's.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, you know, the payment is lower to, to pay it off than what we had anticipated. So anytime you do a budget, your staff is conservative. So I expect, you know, I was a little nervous on the construction cost because construction cost was going up. It was at, I was asked about asbestos removal. The architect has done an environmental assessment of the site to include asbestos and there is asbestos on the site that has to be removed. It's estimated at $60,000. It is in the budget. I've put it in there. Equipment, machinery and furniture, contingency, it's all in there. So this 2 million, 27 million, $775,000 borrowing for the school, I'm not going to say it is going to cover it all, because I'm always conservative, say it should cover it all, but we feel pretty good about it. And I feel a lot better about it since the bid. I really do. So I'll be happy to answer any more questions about it. I hope everybody understands that, that we're, we're rolling. Their objective is to, is as soon as the bonds are sold, they want to issue that contract to the contractor and they want to start in May and that's what they're going to do. So actually, they can sign a contract before April 17th, but they can't give you notice to proceed until after the 17th, 18th, excuse me, when the bonds are sold. I'd be happy to cover anything else about, about the project. I feel like Dr. Bryan has kept me informed along the way. Everything that they were doing, everything that needed to be done. I then tried to communicate to you in my reports, so I don't, maybe don't, don't really know what else I can do.
No, you've done a great job. I mean, I, I think, I'm glad you brought those numbers tonight, John, because in talking to other commissioners across the state and for the association, state board meeting for the legislative committee that we had about six weeks ago, we talked a lot about the school construction costs. There, there are a lot of counties in this state that are in dire need of new schools or renovations of existing schools that just are not in the shape that we're in, but they're seeing these same numbers. The, this is not an extravagant cost for, for a school. This is a school that's famished 1,000 kids. And he made a good point, it's a school and a half. You know, our other elementary schools are for about 600 kids. And so this is a school and a half. And when you look at it that way, it, you know, I mean, the numbers are what they are. Would we like, there was a comment made earlier, you could build two schools for that. No, you can't. Not in North Carolina, not now. You know, it's just, that's just not, if you can, I don't think they pass inspection. It'd be some shyster coming through and building it with cheap construction. I mean, seriously.
They already have one. They have an example.
Well, okay, not gonna go down that road, but yeah, but I mean, seriously, you want a well-built school that's going to last a long time. And, and, and this is what it cost in 2018 in North Carolina.
What's the reality of us not doing this and the size of the school, being able to remove some of the trailers that exist in elementarys?
You'll be able to remove a few, but not, if we can get half, we'd be lucky.
We talked about it in the meeting, and I think it was a couple of commissioners. In fact, I think we asked not to have any old, at the new school.
Right. What was the reason of keeping some of the trailers? Reduced class size.
Yeah, if the general.
Which is required by the legislature.
Yeah, if, if the legislature comes back and says we have to reduce that class size, we're going to be, I mean, this is just, I don't even want to go there.
I think the goal was half, so.
But again, we're growing though, you know? And that's.
That's a good thing.
And there will be, you know, and it was brought up, there will be some impacts with the charter schools, but until, until people enroll, you, you won't know what that impact is going to be. And, but not everybody will go to charter school because you can't play athletics if you go to a charter school. So it's one of those things. The, continuing on my report, since, now let's get to the budget process. So you all told me at the board retreat, we remind you that, you know, we're bringing the Wicker School on without additional tax rate increase. So you can ask your DSS director over here, she got beat up pretty good the other day in the budget, in the budget request. Mr. Kane had to go back and redo his budget. So we are full steam ahead to make that happen. So, and we believe we can make it happen. And we really feel like we're going to have a good bond sale with a good rate. We, we budgeted, you know, we originally were anticipating, using, once again, being very conservative, used a 5% interest rate for the borrowing. And our estimated interest rate last week was 3.48%. So we're, we feel we have a good bond sale and we feel like, you know, if we use that penny and a half for operations, we'll be able to cover the operations at the school and bring it on without a tax rate increase. So, but that means the departments, and they got the message, we need to hold spending. We will, so if you all have anybody come to you, you need to tell them, no.
Most of them have already been through that.
Yeah, they have, they have. And there are some people who are bringing revenue and will get additional headcount. So, you know, actually, we're probably looking at funding the two people in DSS that were asked for, mainly because we want to keep ourselves out of trouble, so we don't have to pay any of that, I call it reversion money, back to the state. Those two positions hopefully will help us where we won't have to pay that reversion money back. So we'll talk more about that in the budget, but I'm real excited about the budget. I haven't gotten the Board of Education or the community colleges' budget. Those are the last two big pieces. The sheriff's office, we're getting ready to go through that with him. And the sheriff's a big department now, I mean, it's a big department. So when we have a 2% COLA, there's a big impact in his department. It was 16 SROs, having SROs at every school, that's a big, that's a big number for us, but something that was needed to be done. Make y'all, bring y'all's attention to this flyer that went out, because I forgot to put it on my report. But April 5th is the opioid community forum that we're having. And we're having it at McSwain Center on Thursday, April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Amy Basin with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has agreed to be our facilitator. So, and she's really there to be more of a guide, because this is more of a forum where everybody will get to talk about the issue in, you know, small groups. We'll have one big group, we'll have some presentations, talk a little bit about, you know, where we are as a county with the epidemic. And then we'll break out into smaller groups and actually talk about, okay, what are we going to do about it? I mean, that's the big question that we're going to discuss here, is what are we going to do about it? What can we do about it? What's everybody willing to commit to it, to, to change this course and what can we do as a community to address it? So Mr. Kane and Ashley Graham in the Health Department are coordinating this. And thank to CHAS Post at the city who kind of spearheaded a lot of this to get us moving on this and come up and, and help us. So we have good collaboration with folks and we should have a good turnout. And hopefully, you know, you all are all invited and it's important that you be there.
Well, what about our mental health people, are you going to do?
Yes, sir. All the people who are part of Project Lazarus are being invited and mental health, the group is part of that. So you get to hear things that you, you know, you, when I went to the Project Lazarus committee meeting, I didn't realize how far along they were.
Oh, they're.
They are way, way, way ahead of things, but I don't think we've gotten the message out. And so that's another purpose of this meeting, is to bring attention to the great work that they're doing.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the budget process, you know, in here, and I agree, you know, we need the, we typically do meet with the Board of Education, the community college, sheriff's office. And then I, I do like the recommendation of, of meeting with the Department of Social Services just to kind of get our board up to speed. Are we going to try to do all of that on the 14th?
The 14th of March, or May? We can, that would just depend on what time you wanted to start, or did you want to break it up, then we'd have to have more days.
I was just, since we're all here and we have our calendars with us, you know, I just kind of wanted to see what the pleasure of the board was, you know, if you wanted to start it, you know? That'd be like 6 to 10 probably to do all four, wouldn't it?
Well.
Or 6 to 9.
The school and the community college would probably take 45 minutes each, so we can probably hold them to 45 minutes. Angelina, we're really going to concentrate on the big changes that are occurring. You know, you were in Washington DC and you heard them.
I did, it's unnerving.
It was amazing to me, you know, everybody focusing on the president and all the things that are going on around him, but then when you cut that peel, that part of the onion back and you find out what's going on, there are a lot of changes to the, they mentioned entitlement programs a hundred times.
Yep.
The staff, the, our legislators, and there's going to be a lot of change in, in programs and it's starting, it's already starting with. and it's starting, it's already starting with DSS, it's gonna hit mental health, and it's gonna hit the Health Department, and so big changes are coming, so we, we just, we feel like she needs to talk about that, and we also probably need to talk about solid waste a little bit. We had a long discussion with Mr. Cherry last week, and need to bring the board up today on, on some things that if we want to really attack trash, we need to talk about how we're gonna do that.
You certainly want all of that.
Yes, and, and, you know what, it's not just us, it's, it's not just us, we talked about it in Washington a lot, so I think we're looking at a national initiative as well. So, look what you started, you know? That's a good thing.
Let's don't drop it.
No, sir, no, sir, so.
But the la, the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, I, I know the commissioners get a lot of technical questions about things that we're doing. I'm available, if, if you wanna hand those people off to me and let me talk to them, I'll be glad to talk to them. I'll show them everything I have on any project, and more than willing to go over with them. They may not agree with what the board wants to do, but at least they'll be educated on what the board is doing.
Well, we're here.
So, please, you know, and if I'm not there, Ms. Minter knows it just as well as I do, as part of being a team, we have people, Michael, you know, we have Michael involved in all of these things. So, we're not, we're not scared. Don't say this.
Yes, sir.
Some people don't want to, too. April the fourteenth, that one about.
April, May, May fourteenth.
Wait, May fourteenth.
It's what's, it's what's on our schedule, and that's a Monday.
Why do we have to wait to try and work some of this in?
That's, I was just asking him if he had some additional dates.
If I had a short agenda, like on April sixteenth, or on the first one of May, and can bring a department in to discuss in a meeting, I'll go ahead and do that.
Let's bring her in first, and get, get that one.
Okay. All right, and then maybe by the sixteenth, we'll see where we are, if we could, you know, bring, at, at least take care of that, and if we need to add an additional day, we will.
Okay, yeah, I'd rather take care in-house first.
I agree. I agree. I just kinda wanted, is that okay with you guys, to try to do that? Okay, I just kinda wanted to get a.
We can have education night on the fourteenth of, of May, and just have the Board of Education and the Community Colleges in, and concentrate on that, and, you know, both, you know, I think have, you know, you brought it up, brought up security, they're gonna have security issues in their budget.
We'll put them in a room, and then see who comes out.
Okay, all right, anything else, Mr. Krupson?
No, man, I think I've talked long enough.
Okay, Commissioner comments, Doctor Fennec?
Just, thank you, John, for all his hard work and transparency, and what I've found balance in the construction of the school. Seems like here things are fun aboard for me, and we thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, sir.
Well, I don't take up a lot of time, but I've got one issue I wanna talk about, and that's out here at Tramway, Tramway School, if any of y'all been out there between seven thirty and eight thirty.
It's, it's real.
It gets worse.
It is dangerous, and something needs to be done, I don't know what we can do, other than maybe we can get staff to write a letter down to the Vision Office in Aberdeen, and ask them if they have a plan, to do something about turn lane and a stacking lane at that school. I mean, traffic's back, back up in the number one, and people pay, I mean, it's dangerous, it's really dangerous to come through there, and what I'm afraid of is you're gonna have some road rage, you know, think about it.
It's active twice a day.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think that we need to find out, do they have a plan, if there's some time in the future to do something about the traffic situation out there. I know I went down to the Vision Office, I think it was in two thousand and nine or ten, I saw that, and, and at that time I was told, yeah, we have a plan, we're gonna have the money, you know, that's always the issue, money. So, anyway, I just wonder if it'd be worthwhile for our staff to send a letter down to the Vision Office in Aberdeen to the Vision Engineer, and just see if, maybe they'll come and dress us for or something, you know, but I don't think we need to set still, we need to do something.
Let me comment on what you're talking about. I did ask Don if he would take a look at Tramway in terms of the available property out there that the school already owns. You know, we may have to consider at some point creating a, a lane to send them out on the.
School property.
Yes, on the school property, and let it stay out there as opposed to staying on the highway. We could eliminate some of the problem.
But one other issue I wanna bring up, too, and I wanna press Heath with this, across the road from the school is a brick house. I've had several emails from people in the county complain about the trash, the, it's just, it's filled, I'm gonna just be honest with you, and I understand as a small child but I think the Health Department needs to go out there and look and see if there's anything we can do about that situation.
I think that house is actually one of the ones on, on Mr. Cherry's list as well, so.
I've, I've had a couple of emails from students that complained.
Doctor Schlemm?
No, I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Connect and the way we looked forward earlier with the motion to, you know, help out the process, I appreciate that.
Quick step.
He is a quick step.
And then I thought, I forwarded a question to the county manager about, you know, I, I continue, and I always will, until I'm not sitting here, get calls about water in the county in certain areas, and I've seen some information out there about potential grants and all, so I want us to keep that on the radar. I know the city's responsible for that, but they need a push as well, so.
Well, let's make, let's make that request, let's ask the city to look into what you're talking about through the board.
That's a project I gave Mr. Silverman, and obviously, the, since we were in the water business, the houses per road and all that stuff probably have changed, we can probably get Don Kabaskas to help us, you know, survey the unincorporated area, and potentially find areas that have the right density, that may qualify for USDA grant, or some clean water grant or something like that, and I did communicate that to Hal, that we were gonna be working on that to try to find grant funding to extend water in the unincorporated areas of the county.
And more is coming.
Well, and I've also had a couple of calls from different developers, because my family's been in that business, wanting to know the route, the sewer is going to the airport, and if it would go to Mega Site, et cetera, and it's, you know, people are planning the future, so I know that's happening.
They have the maps. They just aren't ready to release them yet, I've seen them, and it's very exciting, and, you know, we have a map for the one that goes to the airport, and, you know, one of the things that we, we happened to start discussing is, you know, we use the city's gun range out there by the airport, the sewer line goes very close to that gun range, so, you know, we have a CIP request from our sheriff for a new gun range, and we probably should enter into some discussions with the city, see if they wanna participate at some point in moving that gun range, 'cause, you know, they're, it, it's in all likelihood gonna have to move to a more rural area of the county.
I didn't, I didn't ask them, but do we need to make a motion to get staff to write a letter, or can we just get staff to write a letter down to the Vision Office?
We can, I can take care of that, and actually, they, they have some plans, and I can work through David Montgomery on that, he is on that, so.
I'd just like to get a sponsor, then, to note, if they're, have plans to do something.
We had something developed, we were gonna put in some apartments out there a couple, two or three years ago, and they went down to talk, talk to DOT, and they said.
It's amazing to me, you can see they got the right of way, you can see where the poles are set, those poles, you can sit one foot inside the right of way, and they have the right of way, I know it's expensive to build those things, but what price do you put on a lot if you?
Mr. Ray.
I'd just like to ask the Board of Education, they'll take a, take a look at their excess property around some of the schools that might be treated or considered for development, you got them on the tax book. I'm not sure that I, I know years ago, we did have a list of all those properties and how much vacant property was there.
Then we can regenerate that list as well.
All right, a couple of things, week before last, the county manager and Ms. Brown, and I went to Washington DC, and I, I can't say enough, I greatly encourage all of you, you know, if you get a chance next year to go to NACO, it was a very exciting time up there, we heard a lot of things we didn't wanna hear, as our manager alluded to, and there was a lot of consternation by most of the county commissioners, because not only are things being passed down from the state, you know, unfunded mandates, but the feds are getting ready to do the same thing, saying, you know, you gotta have it, but we're not paying for it anymore. So, we had a lot of long discussions in between sessions, and late nights, and wringing hands, and, but it was still a good conference. We had, we had a lot of, as always, networking, and learned a lot from the other commissioners, and got some great ideas, as John always says, when I go to these meetings, I come back with a long list, and I did again this time, but we're kinda busy, and, but we'll see how that goes. And then I went back again last week, was fortunate enough to accept the invitation from the White House, and went, spent the day there Wednesday, and that was a little mind-blowing, we spent the morning just kind of on a tour, but the afternoon, we spent about six hours with various secretaries and deputy secretaries, and some names you may or may not know, but the Lieutenant Governor of the state happened to be in town, so he came by, and we were at the President's Executive Offices meeting, and Dr. Ben Carson talked to us for a while, and Kelly and Conway spent some time with us, and the Vice President came and met with us for a while, so, but, but we, it, it was interesting, there was a lot, you could tell it was an election year, by some of the things that were said, but at the same time, I will say, and it was, it was amazing, out of all the staff members, and especially the deputy secretaries and all that we talked about, you know, how many connections they had to North Carolina, a lot of them either were from North Carolina or went to school in North Carolina, so they were really anxious to talk to us and spend a lot of time, I collected a lot of business cards, and, you know, had a lot of one-on-one conversations, especially with transportation issues, with the President's Infrastructure Fund, and that also includes water and sewer, and one of the things that I thought was really odd on Wednesday during that meeting was, we kept hearing over and over again, if your state is not helping you out, if your legislature is not helping you out, give us a call, and we'll see what we can do. So, I said, believe me, I will be giving you a call to see what you can do.
Call and delay.
Uh, yes.
Slip it, slip it.
Yes, but, you know, there, there were a few things that, that we discussed, I even brought up the Kelly Drive situation, and they, you know, they were like, that makes sense to us, you know, so we'll see, but it, it was a good meeting, and, and, and they, when asked what the final word was, mine was, no more unfunded mandates, we just can't take it. So, anyway, but, good meeting, and, you know, I'll talk to any of you later if you have any questions, and I'll try to put something together, so you guys can kinda see the last two weeks, and.
I was gonna ask one quick question on the association, have they taken a position in terms of recognizing how much is being pushed down on the counties?
Oh, yes.
Do they have any strategy in mind, or what are they doing, if anything at all?
Oh, they're, they're, they're very active in, at the state level and the national level, in, in lobbying on the county's behalf.
There was a hundred and eighty people at the White House, I think they said that was the largest county delegation of any state that had visited so far, so I think, I think the lobbying piece is very engaged.
North Carolina.
Yeah, and, and I think that's why we got all the heavy hitters coming meet with us that day, is, is just because we showed up, you know, and, and expressed an interest, and there was a lot of good back and forth debate, you know, but it was respectful, and, and I think we learned a lot. Okay, and one last thing, I, I cannot end tonight without sharing sorrow and condolences for the Henry Green family, Henry passed away this week, and he was Mayor of Broadway for several years, he ran the Red Runner Grill, and, and even when he wasn't in his mayoral seat, he was always sitting at that first table as you walked in the grill and conducting business of the town, he, he was just a tremendous fellow that came to Lee County with Champion Maple Homes back in the early seventies, and I grew up with his kids, and went to church with him and his wife, Lynn, and just, just a super, super guy, and, and, you know, loved everybody, so we're gonna really miss him in Broadway, and I just wanna acknowledge just what a tremendous person he was for Lee County, and sorry.
We have one other manager was telling me about.
Bee Fields, former finance officer here forever and a day, she actually trained me and trained Lisa. After I left as finance officer, she came back and did an interim and then trained Lisa, and she passed away yesterday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She was a longtime servant of the county, she and Mr. Hoyle and Mr. Christman up at the tax office, they were kinda the three mainstays that were here forever today, and.
Went back a long time.
That was a long time, so, she was a great lady.
So, definitely need to remember their families in, in our thoughts and prayers, and, and just, well, I, I didn't know that about Bee, you know, what, what great public servants, they, they set a high standard for all of us. So, with that, motion to adjourn?
Go move.
All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thanks for coming.